Certainly. Mayor Sheldon Meyer.
President.
Council President Susan Seale.
Here.
Counselor Robert Orr.
Here.
Counselor Richard Olson.
Here.
Counselor Tom Allen.
Here.
Counselor Melissa Skinson.
Here.
And Counselor Rory Hammond.
Here. I thought, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is the United States of America and its republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have to ask you things to say about that. The question, the urgency of this meeting because in June, we had requested staff to have a report for us before we did this. And my question to you is, who, did you or staff request this meeting? I think we did that conjointly. And what I'm wanting to propose is that we do not make a decision tonight because I think that it's too early to do that. We haven't seen any of the questions answered that we need to have answered. We don't know about most of the stuff on the agenda.
Can you turn your mic up please? You're kind of hard here.
Very hard, you gave it.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
All right. And I'm proposing that we're not racing in to have an election by the November date. I'm proposing that we wait until the next election date, which is in May. And that will give us time, staff time, to collect the information that we need to have to be able to better inform you as to what happens if we do one or what happens if we do the other. And I think that everybody here is interested in finding out what the options are, what might happen or what might not happen. And so rather than rushing into a decision that we might have to change, let's take some time. Nothing's going to happen in the next month or so. And Jamie's flagging me down.
I just wanted to let you know, if the intention was to put the measure, the question, advisory question on the ballot, that has to be into the Lane County elections by next week.
It was not the intention of the vote on, in June, that we talked about that. In fact, it was proposed by Rich, that was mentioned in the news, but the majority, the majority of the council members said that we need to have data for it. And I know of one person who said no. And that's what I'm suggesting, Jamie, is I want to make sure that's clear. We need to have more data, more information. I could not vote tonight on whether to stay as a city or to not stay as a city. So as an agenda item, I think we need to have a report from the mayor for the status of the city because this is a special session that you called. I think also that we, you council, we wanted to cancel the July meeting, I mean, the June meeting because we have some issues. And we were asked to do a special meeting with executive session with council so we can discuss staffing issues. And we did not able, we were not able to have a counsel, a legal counsel. So we appropriately canceled that meeting. And shortly thereafter, we canceled the July meeting. I like the point that's missing on here is the bill, the bills of the day for the July meeting. We have nothing. And so we're going to have two bills to sit to next week, June's bills and July's bills to discuss. And if you recall, when I sent, the reason why I'm concerned about this is because I sent staff and you items to put on the agenda. And since I'm worried about chain meetings, I put the items on there. Some of these items are on there, but several items are not. The budget, committee's recommendations, the audits to fall from last year, and none of those things. And I hope that we didn't call this special meeting because we didn't want to address those other issues. I don't believe that was the case. But they need to be on the agenda. And we should have those of the previous session because we missed July's meeting because we canceled, we weren't ready. I can't imagine how we're ready for this now. That's my, so I'm more than willing to make a motion to accept the agenda on the condition that we're here to discuss this and with the condition that we're going to have a staff report, not a debate now, but a staff report before we can debate it. And we have a meeting that unfortunately, and that's another one, that I hate to see all these people come here and have things put in the press. I didn't even know we're, you didn't poll the council to see if they wanted to have a special meeting or if they thought it was necessary. And that's your job. It's not my job. And I should have had to read the newspaper to find out that I was going to have a special meeting. I did see the pack. And I got that right after I sent my thing. And these packets were not prepared, they were in the mail. And I noticed that several members didn't have agendas today. It's probably because they didn't print them. Usually we have packets available for us to pick up. So that's all I'd say. I'm more than happy to discuss the agenda if you want to make a motion to accept the agenda with those changes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
May I just say, it's my understanding that we are here to listen to what people have to say. This is not a debate, that there is no decision that's going to be made tonight that we're here to listen.
But I, and it strikes me that that's something that we can do. But I agree with you, I understand that. But there is nothing here about public input. There's nothing, it's public so the public can talk about it. And our, me, things that are not on the agenda is for three minutes, for a maximum of 22 minutes. There's far more people here than that can do that. What we're talking about is a public hearing. And we can't have a public hearing until people have enough data to talk about. Instead of just saying, I give up, we want to, we want to not have, not offer leadership and guidance. And we need to be, staff has a really tough problem. They have a very unthankless job. And we're not helping them. We're not giving them clear direction. And it's, we just need to do a better job of it this morning.
Well, I thought the vote at the last meeting was pretty clear when we asked for information regarding what it would take and entail to do this. And we have none of that information in front of our presence at this time. So why did this meeting get called and we not have the information in our presence?
Primarily because the deadline is next week.
Right.
And so if you wanted it on the agenda, if you wanted it to be a referendum on the ballot, it would have to be done this week so that you can get it to the county next week. That's the only reason it was a special meeting. Because you made it sound urgent.
It will not be that pressing an issue that cannot wait till May.
It would be cheaper to wait till May.
I might point out that staff wasn't here when the motion was made and probably wasn't clear what our intent was. And I also, I am very unhappy with the deadlines that we've had to do. I remember a water rights deadline for years and things. I remember a building codes deadline because of things that we need to do. I remember a permit deadline that we needed to do. And I remember a vote that we asked for a property tax increase because we weren't going to get our franchise fees from cigarette sales, motels, and road taxes. So we hurried that onto the ballot. And because of that, we didn't advertise it, we didn't talk to people with it in the time that was needed to make people make a good decision, and that was off the table from that. So I'm tired of being given deadlines to make decisions. We need to make good decisions and we need to have good solid reports and we need to ask great questions. If anyone in the audience feels like they need to hate somebody here at the dais, I'm the one to hate. Because I'm the one that's probably screwed up the most. I've been doing that over the years and somehow I managed to make it this far. You have a?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. I'm Molly Schultz from Lake Drive. I've been here about 20 years. I have a question of how Dune City came to be and why. I think if we know something like about that, maybe we'll have some kind of a starting point. Just asking.
I agree with, I agree with.
I know what it came.
I agree with what you're asking. And I don't, this is what I, I think that we need to have a staff report that explains the history of what we're doing. And this isn't something that we can, I would like you people to grab your counselors' call and tell them what you think. And then I can come here and I'll, I'll, I'll support you and do whatever. But I, I don't want to have, I don't want to have just a crying match about what and where we should be and I don't want to hear. People need to be prepared. And I would like you to have three-minute speeches because you have an ending in the beginning. The last time we had speeches from the public, I know one that lasted 10, 15 minutes. And that would have used our whole 22-minute outline. So people need to be prepared and they need to have the data. I agree with you. We need to know those things. Could we move on? We can, so is there a motion to approve the agenda? I don't even know if I want to approve it. So I'll move. Is there a second?
We would all like a vote in the paper like he was talking about.
I don't know if there's a third motion on the table. The agenda has been questioned and it's been closed. It has been an amended agenda. So we need to clear amended agenda for Rory to make a progress.
I propose that we accept the agenda with, again, with the provisional that the mayor is the seat of the city. And that it's understood that this is just a discussion and not a thing that we're going to validate.
I'll say.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Of staying.
Of staying? I think we have a motion.
Jamie, did?
We have a show of hands, please. Those in favor of the motion? Those opposed? Those abstained?
Thank you. Did my motion, one higher?
Your mail, your motion failed because it was never second.
Okay. And then we had Rorish.
Actually, I had made a move before we started.
Okay.
So. So we approve the agenda.
With a change.
As amended. And the new business, and I'm not hearing any objections from any of the staff or any of our councilors, that it's not reasonable to try and get it on the November date, but let's shoot for getting the information that we need to have from our attorneys and from our staff so that we can get it on the May ballot. I, I'll make, I'd rather, I'll follow up with my proposal, new motion for this. I move that we ask staff for a thorough report concerning the discontinuing of the city, Dune City. A full report and with, basically with a public hearing. I guess I move that. We have a public hearing to discuss if we're going to do this and have input like that. Rather than we have a staff report.
Can I ask a question?
They have the attorney's input on the tax ballot portion of it as well.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that.
When you say Rory, a staff report, are you, are you referring to something that indicates a pros and cons? Continue to be a city we're standing?
I agree with that. And I also believe that part of that is that we have, Dune City has franchise fees. So those, where would those franchise fees go or will they stay the same because we have utility franchise fees? What happens to the road taxes that goes to the county? How will that apply to the things that we do? Where do the motel taxes go? And how will it apply to the local tier because we'll lose control of that? All of those things need to be discussed. We probably should talk about water rates. And one of the things that, now I'm, so far I'm talking about the water rates and franchise fees, we probably should have franchise fees and have somebody do a water district. But we have no leadership for that and we're talking about it. We just have no ears. So those things, those things, because we, the other thing we need to talk about is the city does not have a public, public peace, peace, justice of the peace to help enforce our ordinances and things. And we need to discuss how that involves us being a city and how we don't have it or we should have it or why are we, are we meeting the criteria in this city. All those things should be in the report. And I think it's going to be extensive. And people need to read it before we have a public hearing.
They need to have that, they need to have the input.
It sounds to me like what you want to refer to the, is an actual referendum and not an advisory question. The idea of the advisory question was just to get the feel of people who live here. Do they want to stay or do they not want us to stay? And, and so that's what I thought that was all about. If you're talking about a full, long report, that will take years to get done, to figure out what would happen. It probably will go to court. It has to go to court because Lane Kelly's going to say, we don't want to take them on. And, and so now you have to force them to do it.
Yeah, that, that should be part of the report.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Why is it not Wesley? I mean, why is it you want to throw us over to Florence? And why wasn't Wesley at all put on, you know, a question? Like, why can't we be part of you? If we got you all, I voted, why the hell am I thrown back that way when I'm right with you all? We're right there.
I agree.
You know what? We should be part of your fucking city, not part of theirs. We need us. We need you. That's bull crap.
I think it's important we not throw the baby out.
Okay. Well, I have to put it out. If I don't put it out, I don't, I don't know that.
It could be as simple as doing a name change.
Well, you know what? There's options, like you said, there's options if we go to Florence or there's options if we stay within the city. That's what somebody said apparently. Well, what about Wesley?
We should have a vote. That's what we need to do tonight. If there is an advisory question on the ballot, all that does is ask the question. Are you or are you not? Because if less than the majority of you are not, don't want Dune City to go away, then nobody will even think about it. And I won't have to spend hours and hours and hours and all kinds of attorney time trying to get the answers to these questions. But if you want a full ballot referendum to go to the ballot, then yes, we would have to pay a lot of money to do that. We'd have to get all the experts on board, do all the testing, figure out what would happen, guestimating, because in some places you can't, you know, we don't have the crystal ball. And so that's what I thought this advisory question was about. So I must have been misinformed from the committee.
Well, that sort of information, that sort of information's been reported. We discussed that before you think about this and wasn't here.
The other question is, is if, if people want to stay as a city, are you going to pay the tax?
Yes.
Because in order to operate as a city, you're going to have to pay a tax for this city to be a city. Because as it sits right now, you can't afford to even replace a hot water tank. So there's, there's no money to operate as a city as you are wishing that it would be.
But then we want you all to work for us and we pay you all because you are.
You don't pay us a dollar.
I don't, I don't want any money to represent my fellow citizens of the city. I meant the part of the city, part of the city that you are a part and got in and voted in. So why can't we vote today on why we want this? This is what was on the ballot. I mean, this was what was on the agenda that we all thought.
Well, I agree with that. I have a problem with it being on the agenda. It shouldn't have been on the agenda. It should not have been on this agenda.
Well, it was on July also.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the July meeting and it was, and July meeting was canceled. I'm angry because we lost process, we did not follow process about it. And let's talk about taxes. I know that we, Florence has a city tax.
Let's not jump to something else.
Well, we talked about HOAs and things like.
We need to, we need to handle the first thing first before we jump into anything else. Again, that's making those raps.
So this is under the business of the proposal, the new business. And I, I, put it on the ballot as, as an advisory or anything, it's not the time to do it. If we want to question it, I'm going to talk to people, but it's not the time here. This isn't the place, even though it got out, it was the place when we brought a whole bunch of good citizens out with their ears up and angry. And we're not prepared. I'm not prepared to make a vote.
I don't, I don't think we know if they're angry or not.
We should ask them.
I, I think we should move forward and let them have their voices.
I agree. And we're, we're here to listen.
Because look how many, this is the biggest turnout that I have ever seen since I became a part of this council. And I want to hear all of them.
I think you know what's pretty difficult.
So why don't we just have a vote right here and just see what these people think? Yay or nay?
Just a vote.
Just a vote, just to see, just to get a. If they want to be a city or not want to be a city.
We can't just ask the, we need to figure out how many people are actually there. And see if it's a yay or a nay. We can't, how are we going to do that and just take a whole count of how many hands we see? I don't know if that's what they wish. Correct. Yeah.
Well, this is, this is just an idea. It has nothing to do with anything official, just an idea.
You can't, but we can. A straw poll, is that?
A straw poll, yeah.
Exactly. So that would just be an indication, not a vote.
Yeah, just an indication.
But it would be an indication that would give use of data going into it. So you're going to know how to address this next time when we do have a public hearing.
Can I, can I tell you why Dune City was made? It was, it was put together by a group of people because this land was all going to be gobbled up into the parks.
Right.
And so a bunch of people got together to protect it and they made Dune City as a shelter to keep out the parks.
About one year.
So people could raise families and have residential areas, not Airbnb's. And that's why it was founded. So I just thought you guys should know that.
But we're not allowed to talk about any land. I keep writing letters and trying to speak up about how Dune City came to be and how wrong it was to the people here. And we should have a right to vote. We have had years and years of not being listened to. And you know, I think a lot of people came out tonight because they wanted to actually be heard. They were told in the paper they would be, but I knew you weren't going to allow us to talk because I asked a few days ago and I was told there's nowhere we can talk or even present a letter. So all these people did come out for nothing. So at least let them maybe have a show of hate and stuff, whether they're for or against the city continuing.
Are you for or against anything if you don't know anything about it?
Yeah. That's exactly.
What I think I need to do tonight is to listen to all of you who would like to say something. And I personally don't think that a straw poll would be helpful at this point because there's a lot of information that we all don't have. And it might sway us in one direction or another. But to just, to listen to what you have to say, that was my understanding of what we're going to do tonight.
Yeah.
And I assume we have a list of people who have signed up to speak.
Perhaps.
We don't have people who did not sign up. There was nothing, there was no public comment or anything on here. It was the discussion of this, and this is part of the agenda item. And it is just very frustrating because we had a pre-call and allowed the public to talk in June because staff wasn't here. And the mayor actually wanted to cancel it. He didn't. And we took the time to hear about ordinances and I was greatly impressed about short-term rentals, understanding that. And it doesn't make sense to do that. We have a right, the, I, and the issue about not being heard, I, I've read things on, I read things on the post office wall and the bathroom walls, I guess, the post office wall, about all kinds of things. Everybody, I don't know how many people have heard what, I knew what the, where the city came from. It's just, we have, we have created this special session, this created a chaos. It, it's not well structured. And I don't think the council wanted to have the meeting here. The mayor didn't, were you told? I should have asked, were all of us told that we shouldn't have this meeting? I know the staff and the mayor, we might have had some input about it. And we can't talk, I can't call each one of you guys and say, you want to have this meeting. I have to do it publicly, which I want to do, I don't want to do it behind the scenes. But we, were you prepared, were you prepared or were you surprised what this special meeting came in on? It was Monday that you know that, it's right? All of you, were you prepared to not talk this? Were you surprised? Ask you, who was surprised we're going to have this meeting?
I wasn't aware that there was going to be a meeting, but I came hoping to be able to listen to what people have to say, that was my understanding. Jerry, talk.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't in the back, it wasn't, it wasn't listed that way in the back. It was listed as we put it on the ballot.
And I understand where you're coming from, Rory, but there are times that come into the meeting where we have to be true representatives of our people of the city. And that's what we need to say. So push this aside. Let's talk to our people instead of having to worry about if there was a public forum on here or not. We have the ability to make those changes right here, right now.
So I, I would be more than happy to move to adjourn the meeting and have a public, have a public people vote. I don't, I just, I don't think this should be an official meeting.
You're right, because we have no city that's working here to talk about the next option.
We don't, we're talking about any of this right now. It needs to really become.
Well, I think we should adjourn the meeting because of the fact, we don't, we don't have a city attorney, we don't have any of those things. I'm willing to talk. I wouldn't have everybody talk, have it online. But I don't want to feel like I need to pass a new bill or anything like that. I don't want to be forced to make a decision that I'm not ready to make. I'm certainly willing to talk about it. And I'm certainly willing to workshop.
I think we all agreed, didn't we, that there wouldn't, we weren't willing to make a decision tonight.
Yes. I would like to hear from a couple of hands right here.
Thank you. Donnie Anderson, I agree with you fully. I will not make the decision without knowing the pros and cons. It's just, it's not right. My worry coming here tonight is I fell out of the blue when I read that there was going to be a vote. It was out of the blue. I didn't, I didn't know about this. And I'm wondering, are the residents involved in the process or is something going to happen? I think that's the worry of most people. I think that was the worry of the people that just walked out. Because I'm going to be one of those people and say, I came here worried about something being placed on the ballot with nobody knowing the facts. Or let's, let's have a vote now with the people in here, a straw vote, which not everyone knows about. So you have a small representative for everybody. I don't think the residents of Dune City are being represented when I hear stuff like this. So I'm not going to vote and.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
I just think that you should let people talk. That's what you, that we're all here, let us talk and let us voice the concerns of different aspects of how disincorporation would affect us. Maybe there's some things, some questions we have that you haven't even thought of. And so just let us talk, let people voice their concern.
The only thing I would request is that if we have an open talk, that we do not have a negative talk. Hold on a second. The negative opinions have continued that we have seen every single meeting that delays the ability to get an accurate discussion completed.
Give everybody so many minutes.
Yeah, right. Correct, right.
I'd like to ask, with all respect to the council members and the mayor, when and if you make a decision, I honestly don't believe it should be up to seven people to decide a whole city. I think you should send out letters and ballots. And I think it should go up to the vote of every citizen in Dune City. Not every resident. Not, not just seven people on the board.
I would like to tell you that the way that this works is that the city council sends it to the vote of the people. And that's what they're discussing tonight.
Right, that's what I didn't know.
Should they send it to the vote of the people? That's the question before them tonight. And if so, is the warning that the attorney drafted the good wording or is there some other way they want to change it?
I, it just wasn't clear to me how, what the process was going to take place.
Right. So they would go to the vote of the people. And then if you voted, if the majority of the voters voted in favor of doing away from the, away with the city, then the city at that point in time would start doing the work necessary to figure out how that happens.
Thank you.
And how to keep everybody as whole as possible. That's the way it works.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I stand up, but I can't. It takes a while to get up. My main statement is, I'm sorry, Judy Lee, State Department Boy Scout group. We are part-time, we're here six months out of the year. I pay property taxes, but I don't vote in this state. I'm willing to increase property taxes to support our infrastructure and our lifestyle. That's why we chose to move here. But I can't vote.
Okay, so yeah, you have to be a registered voter of Dune City. And in order to do so, you, you, you're correct, you are paying taxes. You're paying taxes to Lane County. Lane County only gives just a small percentage of road tax, gas tax, cigarette tax, lodging tax, back to Dune City. There's not much...
Lane County doesn't give us anything.
So that's, that's the problem in, in what is going on, is there's no money to operate. Everybody here wants Dune City to operate as a city. They want water systems, they want sewer systems, they want better representation, they want code enforcement, they want all this stuff. If you're going to have all these things, you're going to have to pay for it. I did a rough estimate, now, this is strictly rough. If you were to do enough tax for every household in Dune City, you would be paying about a thousand dollars a year for every five hundred thousand dollars in the Cessna. Because the city is going to need approximately a million dollars a year to operate as a true city. And start looking at water systems, sewer systems, attorneys, judges. I mean, you're, you're talking money that, you, you can go to any city and look up the information and find out what it costs them to operate, and you're going to find out that I'm probably not too far off.
Would we still have to pay Florence taxes, too?
You would still have to pay Lane County tax. You don't pay Florence tax. You would have to pay Lane County tax, and then you would also have to pay Dune City tax. No, no, we already, already have our own water system and our own sewer. I don't see why that's a issue. Everybody here who owns a house has a sewer and a set of water, and they wouldn't have a house. So I don't see why that shouldn't be put in there. That's like cake on a frosty, you know, and it's, you really don't have to have that to operate as a city. You don't. We all do it just fine. You're, you're actually, I disagree with that. Rick, I would like to point out to you that the budget revenue from the general fund is two hundred eighty-five, is that two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars a year or is it more than that? I just see, I'm looking at, for me, the budget is four, four hundred fifty-five thousand, but I see here the budget giving the exact track.
That included Arable funds.
Okay, so the past...
And the Arable funds for that year were two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, so cut that in half, and that's how much we have in a year.
So the point is that we do have revenue that's applied to it, and it's not just income that we, we, there's been no assessment to figure out what it needs to be. You're right.
How about if we're a part of Westlake? Instead of throwing us to be Dune City, why can't we be Westlake and be part of your taxes?
Westlake is Dune City.
Westlake is Dune City.
Every time I mention Dune City, people snap off and yell, it's Westlake!
No, you're not.
Okey-dokey!
So we're, we're talking about labels. We, we have a, I guess they're both accurate places, and we have election precinct, was it five some, I don't know the number now. And there's twelve hundred voting residents, of approximately twelve hundred. That's Dune City, that's Westlake, that's Wohink, that's all of that. And so if you want to call it Westlake, I don't care personally, I'd push like it. I could, I, in fact, it could be called North Shore, because I live on the north shore of Silkus Lake. It could be called Wohink. All I care about is that we're a group of people that we can help each other and have a community.
Thank you, it was promised to us that Westlake could keep their name, so thank you for confirming that.
I, I didn't confirm anything, I said I don't care.
Well, I, I do care.
Carrie Horne, Mississippi Avenue. The, the dollars you're talking about are making us a real city, you know, to operate that way is good one. So the counterpart to that would be if we turned everything over to the county, what would, what services would we get? What would we lose? No, we're trying to provide answers, we want to vote on this, we'll have to all decide which way to go. We do not have all of those answers yet, and that's why I'm pushing to not go to vote in November. Let's get some information and vote the vote we may, when we have a better...
Or later.
... inform.
All right, so from my understanding, if I'm listening to Jamie, Jamie's saying that if we put this motion, not really a motion, it's basically a feeler question on the ballot, and people are up in arms because we're asking the question of, should we consider this or not? Because a lot of people are up in arms about Dune City, whether it's the name or the title, Westlake. We're in a corporation of twelve hundred people. My address, when I write, you know, it says Florence. I don't have Dune City. I live in Dune City and I love Dune City. I, I came out here, I'm a teacher in town. Now, we have issues, and we want to get services, and we want to be a community. Now, I think asking the question, should we consider this, yes or no, is a valid thing because it will solve a lot of things, because if we all say, no, we want to stay Dune City, then the city doesn't have to spend thousands of dollars that they don't have to get all these questions of disincorporating.
Very good.
Right? Aren't we twenty-four thousand dollars in debt right now?
Yes.
From what I read in the, that's what I used to do.
I do need to clarify that tonight.
Right? So if there is a, if there is a debt, and we're all up in arms, we need to figure out, okay, how do we get out of debt? So we're going to have to pay some sort of property tax, right? If we want to have amicable services, right? So we don't have Florence PD come down, we have Wayne County Sheriff.
State?
Right? Am I correct? Okay, so, you know, if my house or something like that, Florence PD won't even come out here. We have to wait forty-five minutes for the sheriffs to come out. And that's on a good day. Right? So we have some big issues.
I have, I have a list of, my own personal list of things that are important to me, one of them is water. And I have twenty-six things, and one of them is the Dune City issue, the question of persuade US Post Office to convert all Dune City addresses to Dune City for Florence and Westlake or whatever thing. And it's a question of identity, and that's about that precinct thing. And that's, because Westlake is, Dune City is part of Westlake, and there's Dune City residents with Westlake addresses. And, and I have that same problem with, because I have a Westlake Clio Box, nine seven three nine and nine seven nine three, you know, so I'm always getting them wrong. And it kind of bothers me when I, when I, I talk to realtors or things about addresses or, or I get home insurance and things, they can find it as a Florence address. That really bugs me, because I, I live in Dune City, too, and I love Dune City.
As part of my report that you've requested, I would be able to include the fact that when Dune City became a city, it included the entire Westlake area, which also incorporates the other side of Silkus Lake, the far side where, you know, Nightingale's is and all the way. And they were incorporated into the city, but they immediately petitioned to be out. And so they were let out, they didn't want to be apart. So now that's why we're stuck with Dune City and can't call it Westlake, because Westlake is a post office box and a post office area that covers a specific period of land. That having been said, the state is coming down on the city, wanting us to expand our border so that we make sure we have at least twenty percent more buildable land inventory. It is a state law, and they are coming down on us. And so, you know, expand over there? Do they still want to not be in there? You know, I don't know. I don't know if it'd be something they'd be interested in, but that might solve that problem, change the name to Westlake, do away with Dune City, and incorporate that area in. And now we're the whole area plus a whole bunch more that didn't used to be Westlake, that would be Westlake now.
Westlake would like to be the town where we've always been. We didn't create this gigantic debt.
Yes, I understand that, Jamie, I know its history. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not sure you do know.
Sounds like the gentleman in the salmon-colored shirt had it right. We are all here because we want to address, should we do this or should we not do this? And none of us know what the consequences are. Either way, as you guys have said, you don't know either.
Right.
And I've never heard about the Westlake thing and the Dune City, but I can tell you that as a mail carrier in Florence, I have people, they get their mail delivered in Florence, and their address says Dune City. And it's just because it showed up first, and that was the way that they put it on the computer system. So it sounds like there's a whole bunch of little, little details, but the big picture is, we all need to know what everybody in Westlake, Dune City wants. Do we want to see it go to Lane County, or do we want to see what, you know, what are the options? We need to know where the options are, and if people want to do it or not.
Or if there's negative positives to, you know, list the negatives, list the positives of joining Lane County or becoming Westlake or all that.
We are, have part of Lane County, it depends what we lose or have.
But if it goes on the ballot and a thousand people say, yes, we want to know...
The, the question is, is how will we pose that question on the ballot, Jamie? And can we pose that question on the ballot for the citizens to have the right to vote on, do we proceed with incorporation, unincorporation, taxes, no taxes? Can, can that be put on the, the ballot to vote?
Not that way per se. You can only have one subject matter, and it must be answered with a yes or no. And so if you could put a couple of ballot questions on there, which would, could really end up in a mess, seriously, if they voted, no, do away with the city, but here tax them, you know, that, that's...
Could we do, could we do two? Do the citizens want to unincorporate, and do they want to pay a city tax? So, so that would give us the information that we need to, to know whether or not we're going to go.
Until then, we do need to know. I mean, I have heard from one attorney one thing and one attorney something else when it comes to the water. And so I don't know what the answer to that will be, and I don't know how to get the answer to that.
Well, I, I think you know as well as the rest of us that the state's not going to come out here and tell you that you can't pull water in a house that has five people living in it.
Yeah, you say that, but I've seen them do it.
And I, I have heard that, correct, from the water master.
I got a question about the water then. Why did Dune City give permits for houses or like the Association South George when Bob Archroyd and Dick Anderson made it? They, they knew that there was no wells going to be drilled, they knew that the pipeline was going to be run to the property line and to the lake's edge. The, Dune City gave permits to build, and banks gave, they loaned money on it. So how did the people not think they, they had water?
That's the question.
That's the question. It sounds like several people didn't do their jobs.
The, and because our permit is only a permit, some attorneys are saying it just goes away.
Well, I, I got, banks don't loan money.
When it's a permit, we are allowed to sell pieces off if we want to.
Banks don't loan money unless you have water. So I'm just saying, between the banks and the people that gave the permits to build these houses, it is just beyond me. Now they're saying, oh, you've got to do this special thing for water. This is just like, it, it is, it is a terrible thing to put people through, and people failed their jobs when these places were developed, and every house was sold, and people got permits for them. The first question should have been, this, this, and this, and the bank should have made sure. So the bank's loaned money, and you gave permits?
Yes, we did, we said we did.
Did you have a comment or a question?
It was answered.
What?
I was commenting, the person that seems to know more about any of this is Jamie. She has the best solutions, I think, the best knowledge of what's going on. And we should pay a lot of attention to what she has, because she seems to be knowledgeable about the whole situation.
Been here a while.
Yes.
I appreciate that, but I don't know it all, and I don't know what the council wishes for. But I do appreciate it.
She does have a lot of information. Yes, you're right.
I've been here all my life, I've been here for seven decades now, and I think I know a little more about Westlake than you do, Jamie.
Oh, I'm not saying you know more about Westlake.
And so it frustrates me, you all say you want to know more, but you don't want to listen. I keep trying to tell you how people feel.
Doug Ardini, I'm in Lake Wayne. So, so definitely for, of course, any vote on incorporation, staying incorporated or unincorporated, we definitely, of course, need a lot more information to do an intelligent vote, having to do with the pros and cons, and if we want to stay a city, which I think most of us do, then we, we need to know what that can entail and what has to be done. But then this whole question also that we just learned was whether or not we represent Westlake, too, then we ought to get Westlake involved in this whole thing to incorporate together. I mean, because if one, one says that they are part of us, another says that they wouldn't be part of us, so I'm not quite sure how that fits, but I think they definitely have to be part of this loop of helping decide on what the community's going to be.
Westlake was just a post office, that's all Westlake was, a post office area.
You were a lot more, Jamie, that is not true.
Yes, it was a community, yes, it was a community, our people, yes.
We had sports, we had free motels. You don't say we were just a post office, we had, and Dune City had sports and that too.
I was just wondering if you could tell me what, where the line separation is or where the separation is between Westlake and Dune City, because my understanding, it's the exact same thing.
No, the Westlake area here on this side of Silkus Lake is in the city limits, the, the boundaries of the city limits. The Westlake that is part of the post, the other part of Westlake there, which is in the post office district, is the other side of Silkus Lake. I don't know if it goes out to the Haight-Aid range, but it may.
It does. There's three hundred and ninety-four people in the Westlake post office.
So it doesn't include anything on the north beach side?
No, not at all.
That's considered?
That's considered, well, all of it's considered Dune City.
But not the part on the other side of the lake?
Anyway, Linted Tipton Parkway Drive. I wanted to piggyback on what Jamie said, I don't know if you are aware, there's been some House bills and Senate bills that have just passed up at the governor's level, coming down for the state that is going to affect us all. Basically, we're going to need to decide, we may have to pay more taxes, do we want to stay separate, do we want to govern our own community, or do we want the state to come, take us over? And we're going to be mandated by what they want. Do, they're going to force ADUs on us, they're, you know, they're going to regulate our vacation rentals. Do we want control? And to keep control, we may have to pay in order to do that. Yes, we all need a lot more information, we have to have that before anybody can vote. But it is something that the state is starting, they're getting federal funds, there's like over forty-eight billion dollars coming to the states, they want the money. Governor Kotek's biggest deal right now is housing affordability and homelessness. You know, Florence is, you know, discussing there, it could happen to us if the county takes over, we lose our voice. So I think that's the biggest thing we need to see right now, do we want to keep it? We all want to work together, we love Dune City, we want to keep it, whether it's Dune City, all of Westlake, you know, we are our people, okay? We're our community. We want to keep it, we want to do what we think is best for us and not have it come down from the county or, or somebody else.
Basically, do you want local control, or do you want Eugene to control us?
Thank you.
You might have a lady back here that has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just had a lot of conversations going on around me, and I'm hard of hearing, so I was hoping you guys could tell everybody to be quiet again, but the gentleman over here who yelled me. Yes, Mr. Olson, oh, first of all, my name's Christine Lekam on Fort Wayne. Mr. Olson...
Mr. Olson, you had said about wording the correct way to get it on the ballot as to whether or not all of the citizens of Dune City, whether it's Westlake or wherever you are, to decide, do we want to vote on this or not? And you mentioned something about taxes. I remember a while back that there was a vote, we all voted in some election and we voted it down not to pay not one penny of tax.
That's right.
So that needs to be addressed again, it sounds like, from what you said.
Well, and, and the deal is, is if you want to operate as a city, Dune City needs to be able to collect a tax so they can operate as a city. Because the only tax that's being paid is the same thing that you, if you lived in Florence, you pay a Lane County tax and you pay a Florence tax, okay? In Dune City, you pay a Lane County tax and that's it. So there's no, there's no money to operate as a true city.
So that's, that's a little simplified. We pay, we pay a southeast on fire district tax. And then we pay a library tax. We, in some respects, we pay franchise fees to, to the PUDs and all those. All those are taxes. And I might point out to you that there's some HOAs that they govern themselves and they pay a HOA tax and they have whole councils that run them. I think the Green Trees, for instance, I think one of the short ones. They, they have, they pay extra things to have more control of their area, even over above in Florence. So have it, I mean, right now, we're, we're less than HOA in my opinion in terms of governance.
So that's my point.
Yes.
We need to know what everybody wants.
That's right.
And, and just from everything that I've read in the paper and just from being here today, I would rethink my vote on whether or not I'd want to pay taxes if we're going to be forced to go through Lane County and have the state and everybody else monitor what we do.
Thank you.
And, and so that's what I'm saying, that if you can get the correct verbiage on the ballot so that we can all say, no, we really don't want to have a city any longer.
And, and at this point, I, I don't believe that we can get this on the November ballot. I believe this is going to be a May ballot because in, in order for us to have the right verbiage, in order for us to get it on there correctly so that it's not messed up, so that you all get the opportunity to make an informed vote, we got to have some more information to be able to do that. So rather than, like Sheldon said, like Uri said, rather than push the issue, let's wait until the May ballot. Give everybody the opportunity to get the information they need.
But can you just put something simple as, would you be willing to pay a tax to keep our?
But that's a, that's.
Would you be willing to pay a tax to keep Dune City?
That's a pretty open question.
Right, but, but you, but you guys need the information. So maybe you just do a private ballot, mail to all the citizens and it doesn't go on an official.
See, the, the problem with that is that we've gone, Jamie, maybe hit on that, is what we deal with the mailing system. It doesn't go to everybody here because their property's owned by people that aren't even here that haven't correctly readdressed or, you know, put their correct addresses on. So we have how many, and we, coming out.
The only thing that we have that's close to being accurate is the voter's poll because we have a precinct for that. And I, I don't know, and I'm sure that doesn't include all the properties.
No, she's saying that she's not even on it in her life.
Yeah, no, I got it. But they're the ones that'll be deciding, the people who vote.
Right, I understand.
To get on the May ballot, we have to make, you'd have to get that information, get approval like three months before, don't you? So we would have to get the information out very early beginning of the year in February so that we can look at it. And if you give us a summary of, even though you don't have to go to the total detail, but if you get 90% of what the pluses and minuses are, that will give us enough to work on. And then we can meet again and then be ready for that vote.
Well, I agree with you and I think that we need to be actively lobbying about it too in the last book. We got, we didn't have a chance to do it in lobbying.
Is it a safe time, Jamie, to put that data together? That's a really short amount of time and I don't want to stress to you guys now in order to.
That was my question. Is there a time limit in doing this? Is there? No, there isn't. Not really. There's not, other than time limits associated with the ballot. I don't know what the deadlines are for the May ballot. I do know however, from my conversation with the elections person the other day, that there are a lot of questions going on coming on the upcoming ballot. And what that means is if, if, if the city, for example, if Dune City were to move this question now and put it on the November ballot, the city would have to pay for all the publication, all of, all the new ballots, all that stuff. We would be required to pay for that because there's nobody else doing that. So all the expense would come to the city. But if we waited until May to do something like that, there are a lot of questions coming up on the May ballot and it would spread out that cost so that we don't have to pay as much.
Would it be better on the November ballot when the president runs? Would it give everybody more time and more, get more information?
Oh, wait, wait a full year? I don't know.
The next presidential one. And I mean, everybody'd be putting stuff on. It'd be almost free to us.
Well, the one in May is what you were saying. It's a very good chance.
And maybe we'd have more time for everybody to look at, be invited, the staff to take care of it and everything. And there's no big rush on this that I can see.
Isn't the whole question of unincorporation come up because of indebtedness that you can't continue operating?
Thank you for bringing that up here.
I mean, the whole, how are we going to handle it?
This is the way Dune City's budget works. We have five pots of money, okay? The street fund money, the gas tax comes in, it has to go for streets. The motel tax comes in, it has to go for our recreational or motel, our motel fund. So some of them are earmarked, some of them are not. The fish, the fish, fish greens, that's what caused this whole thing. The water fund is now, this last year, I requested that it become a enterprise fund so that it can be run as a business. And that's what we have not been doing in the past. And now that it's being run as a business, we can, you guys need to consider raising the fees or however we're going to do it. We haven't even talked about it. We don't even know because we're still going on. But I borrowed money from the street funds to meet the demand for the fish green requirement from the state. And now we have to pay that back to the street fund and that's the tricky part. We have to pay them back and we have to figure out a way to do that. We are able to do it a little bit of time over a few years, but that would be the job of the budget committee. And oh, by the way, there's still openings. Oh, anybody who wants to come.
Why was the road on Park Avenue, why did we spend money on that?
Because it was caving into the.
Yeah, but you, you didn't just fix that though, you see? I think the money, I think the money, I mean, I think that road could have just been closed off. You could have spent the money to get Dune City's road off my property. Dune City's whole road, buckskin bobs on my property. You know, I feel like I've been cheated. You know what I'm saying to you? It's like you.
I don't know. When I, when I go on Dune Work, I have, I have the surveyors come in and survey it. Survey it so I know where the city's lines are.
It's already been done. It's already been done. I'm just saying that I don't think that road was in that much of a dire straits and now you've created a danger. Point of order, because now.
Can we get back to the main topic, please?
People can drive off of the little cliff you made with your chain blocks. There's no guardrail or nothing there.
That's because the grant funding that paid for it wasn't paid for that.
Yeah, yeah, you can ship it above the same level.
Are there any early proposals that, that you could think of to help sustain the, the, the city until you can get on the ballot?
The budget committee did meet, was it May 21st or June? We did meet and we actually had some recommendations to bring to the council, but it hasn't been brought to the council to increase the fees. And the other thing is the budget committee was supposed to meet in the middle of July with the year-to-date budget from June to July, from July to June. And we haven't received that for the actuals. And, and that, that wasn't addressed. That was one of the action items that I had sent for the week and did show on this one, a total of a little bit. The budget committee needs to meet and talk about the actuals and do the budgeting. And we need to talk about restricted and unrestricted funds. We, we have a, we get a monthly report, new bills and things. And we, we get a pretty good idea of what, what we spent for the month. But nowhere in those reports that shows what's in the actual cash, what are restricted and what's unrestricted. So we have some reporting issues we need to address and that's one of the things that I'd like to see addressed. But that, those sort of things, the budget committee actually has some recommendations for.
Why don't we all like to hear that? We all, if there's anything that the community could help decide or to help the city operate until we can get this resolved.
We're not in debt. We just, on the books, the books are fine. We still have money in the bank. That's not the problem. The problem is the street fund is short of money in the eyes of the auditors. And so they want us to get that money in there. And until the new bills come out next June for water, it's not going to come in until then. And so we have to figure some kind of stopgap in between. And it usually will come from the general fund.
But it sounded like that's what brought up the whole unincorporation idea.
No, it's really not did it.
That they cannot continue operating this way.
That's really not what did it. It was people coming to the meeting and saying they need to do away with Dune City.
Really?
Mike Kirk, Lake Wayne. I've got a question regarding, we were talking about the, the assessment that would be required to continue as a city and it was stated a thousand dollars for every 500,000. And so I was curious, what are Florence residents currently paying to Florence? Is it, is it something similar? Do we know?
I didn't look that up. I just, I just did a rapid assessment about what it would actually take to revenue a city. So I mean, like I said before, that is not a dollar amount that was set in stone. It was just something that, you know, that decided in Dune City, if you're going to operate streets and water and sewer and, you know, we need to have somebody that can do codes, code enforcement. You got to hire more employees. You're going to have, you're going to have PERS retirement. You're going to have wages. You're going to have LNI. You're going to have all these issues that you need to deal with. It's going to take money. So in order to accomplish that, you're going to have to pay some more tax in order, or to get that done. Now, whether that's a thousand dollars for 500,000 or whether it's 500 dollars for 500,000, it, it needs to be seen or, or addressed. But the, the point is that if we're going to get, you know, people that can go out and take care of these Airbnb issues, if we get somebody that can go out and take care of these sewer issues, these septic issues and things that, that keep coming up, that everybody in the city wants addressed, in order to accommodate that, you have to have the personnel available to do that. In order to do that, you have to have the money to pay those people.
I agree. How do we get that on the ballot?
I'm sorry.
How do we get that on the ballot?
Well, that, to have a, to have a, a tax put on the ballot has already been done to my estimation three times and has been turned down three times.
Very open ended.
Then it sounds like, I'm sorry.
Ted Vanderweil.
We need education.
We could go around in circles and circles and keep going, I mean, because we've already done it here for over an hour. You can simplify this. Send something to every house. If there's people that sit there and they live here for a couple of months and they go to their other house somewhere else, are they permanent residents of this organ or are they just residents or what? That's all beside the point. Send something and see what the people do. And let's see if they come back and they can give you guys something, say, like a little vote. Say, hey, we want to, we want to go this way or something and just pass it through that way. And then you guys can carry on with what you got to do. Because I mean, we've got a lot of people here too that don't want to, don't want to split it up. Don't want to get rid of it. And you got people that want to get rid of it. So this is, this is a tenth of probably the people that are supposed to be in this town. So it has to go to everybody. And it's simple, it isn't going to cost that much. Send out a, a paper or say yes or no and see what you get back and go from there.
I believe that if we, if we send out something like that, we still need to educate. Otherwise, we, they don't know why they're voting, the way they're voting. Otherwise, we need, like I said, we need education.
Information should be included in that too.
There's a lot that we don't know yet. We don't have the answers.
It was kind of, you know, pretty sure it's trying to get us going.
Of, of the things that we do know, we are certainly aware that there are pros and there are cons to going both routes. And what we, what we need to do and what we, and I was, I was on the council when we had the last vote for a tax. But we hadn't, I think, in retrospect, we hadn't made it as clear as we could have why we were asking for what we were asking and what the, the consequences would be of having it pass or fail. So, so I would be very hesitant to rush into anything in the way of even, even a straw vote. And I know that's come up several times tonight because it doesn't, we're not fully educated yet. We, we can't, we can't knowledgeably vote even in a straw ballot until we know what those pros and cons are.
What would it take to get to that point?
I would point out though, the way you get, the way tax questions are worded is set by law. We're not allowed to change it. So what we have to do if you're going to refer a matter is not refer it, wait until later, but do a whole lot of education first. Because, because once you, you guys get it, they're not allowed to talk about it anymore.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
I think we have a general consensus that people just want to know the information before they make a decision. So I think I agree with what you said on taking a straw vote. Now it's not going to be sufficient.
Other comments or questions?
My name's Terry from Ocean Boulevard. I wonder, we've been through this thing of voting for tax and we always say no. And I don't see what you think you can do to change that and the people that are voting no. Because what do they feel like, they don't feel like they have anything to lose. They just keep saying, no, nothing's going to ever happen. I mean, sure, we're having this meeting and there's this issues going on. But at the end of the day, people really don't think anything bad's going to happen by not voting for a tax.
Because that's what we need to come back, like Mr. Kirk said, and do the education before we even put it out there for a vote.
But what will happen if we never, ever vote for a tax? What will happen to us?
That could be what we propose in the education.
I can tell you what might happen. I can tell you what happens to another city in Florida.
I can tell you, they didn't and the bills added up and added up and added up. And so they ended up filing bankruptcy and dissolving. Those bills were divided up by the judge and taxed on every single one in the city. So you can pay sooner or later anyway.
Well, I mean, I know that. I don't have a problem with paying tax. I mean, I'm glad it came from the library and I'm glad for, I'm glad for that. But I think there's a huge majority, much bigger than the people in this room, that I don't want to pay tax and will not ever vote yes for a tax.
I just, I wonder about the tax ballot that failed, the last one. I've only been here, I think, for six years and I think that's the only one that our household has voted on. And it's not that we didn't want to pay taxes, it was the verbiage. The way it was written made us feel uncomfortable. It was like open ended.
I know, and we're not allowed to change that. There were so many things, but had we had been able to do an educational thing ahead of us and people felt assured, okay, this is what's going to happen, then when they get that state legislative language, then maybe they will come and ask some questions and want to know and, and we won't get all the wild stuff that happened.
What would it take to, to, to put together something to educate us, give us the pros and cons of the history of where we are and where we were and where we want to be to send out to everybody in the community and just, and then have a meeting and see what, how we all feel about it?
So I have, I have some thoughts about that. I agree with you also about, about. First thing is when we talk about taxes, the last one, we were, it was a short one because we thought we weren't going to get certain funds. And we had to have a tax in order to have a tax base in order to receive these state funds. And that wasn't true. We didn't. But that wasn't true, we didn't find out until after the ballot. My strategy for doing the tax thing is, put it out before we put it on the ballot, and say that we're for this, and this is why we're doing it, and then put it out on the ballot, because we can't talk about it after that. And we did not do that, we did not sell it, we did not persuade people why we needed it or anything. And the other option is that sometimes the city does a lot of obscure things, and people don't value what it, what some of the good things provide. So we need to enforce that, and tell them, these are the things that we're getting from here, the city.
We just need to be more transparent with our citizens of the city, that way they have confidence in us.
Absolutely.
Move forward and not look backwards.
Absolutely.
We used to send out a newsletter regularly. It costs us a thousand dollars just in postage, and at least a thousand in printing now, to do that. Between a thousand and fifteen hundred to get it printed. And so, that's why we quit, because the cost was so bad, and we had the option of the internet. But we don't have the option of the internet. We do, but we don't.
Why does we email, why do we email so hard?
We tried that, and somebody found that our email was so nice and luscious that I stole it, attacked everybody. I mean, everybody. I had to get a hold of this computer.
Jamie, would it be possible that if we were to do a community newsletter again, that it could be put out there in a fashion that if you wanted the information, you can come to Dune City and get a copy of it right here? Is that impossible?
Yes, that's a certain possibility.
Okay, I'm just throwing it out there.
Post it at the post office, take a picture.
Order.
I, I think in, in a proposal, or for the, with the pros and cons of what we need to do to stay incorporated, and to what we'd have to hire, what we'd have to pay out for minimum staff to keep it as a cohesive city for all the things we need to have done, like you were talking about, you know, with enforcement for the things we need to, you know, enforce, that, you know, you could put together something that would be a rough, a, a rough plan for that, couldn't you? In a short time, and then have a newsletter on it?
I would prefer that, Jamie, that it be possible, and then maybe have a public forum where questions can be asked. But that would be, I would fill up to you, Jamie, as to the time in order to put that together.
Well, the only thing I can do is just do some quick research, like on law enforcement, that kind of thing. Yeah, which you need to do. But besides law enforcement, what other subject matters would you want? Like how much does it cost to put in a water system, and all that?
People would, people would do it.
I'm not sure everyone does, or councilors. A lot of times, it's baby steps. You, you make it, you make it so, it's not a thousand dollars per five hundred thousand dollars. It's baby steps, it's starting somewhere, and getting something, and, and starting this transition, I think. I, I think, if the dollar amount's too high, it'll definitely keep people from approving it.
I, I agree with you, and I, I think that the two number one issues that have come up in the eight years that I've been here, number one, bar none, is law enforcement. Okay? Everybody in this city has hounded and hounded about law enforcement for eight years. Number two is code enforcement. And I think code enforcement is basically almost number one with, with law enforcement now, because of the Airbnb stuff that are going around.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals. Short-term rentals, excuse me, short-term rentals. So, you know, those are the two main things that, that I would see that would need to be addressed right up. Would you agree with that, Jamie?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to take a question about an answer, but to talk about law enforcement. This is back when Maury Sanders was chief of police of Florence. I've been involved with this for a number of years, I was also, he's been a budget committee here. The first salient question you have to ask is, what is the crime problem? How much burglary, how much homicide, et cetera, et cetera. There wasn't enough to warrant Florence sending an officer out here to patrol on a regular schedule, limited schedule, to do it. There was no budget for it, it can't be done. So guess what? It reverts back to Lane County, because this is Lane County jurisdiction, not Dune City.
Exactly, Molly, thank you very much. We had the sheriff out recently, and he told us, because people are so frustrated by not getting reaction, that they're not even reporting the crime now. So now, Dune City looks like it's like heaven. You want to go live there, because there's no crime, nobody's reporting any crime, and we all know better than them.
That's exactly right.
And, and the last time we had the sheriff in here, not, not this last time, the time before, he said it'd be a minimum a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I used to say, one full time, remember, that would only be basically like a forty-eight week. So, but which would be better than having absolutely nothing. But those are some of the numbers that, you know, I can look at, bare minimum, just for one officer, is going to be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Yeah, we don't need that. I'm sorry, I'm kidding. One of the things, there are two things that occurred that we've been talking about here. One of which is, starting with a very small tax, one of the things that we heard the last time, several years ago, that it was a very small tax that we were trying to go forth. And what we heard from, I would say, a number of people was, oh, you're just trying to get your foot in the door, and once we vote for one, it'll just increase from there. So that's, that's a concern that, that people have. As far as the, something else I was just going to address, I'll think of this, oh. No, I'll think of it in a minute, I'll, I'll thank you. But the, the tax one is a little tricky, oh, I know what I was, I was going to say. In terms of getting a word out, and that clearly is something that we need and want to do, past experience, not necessarily in Dune City, but a lot of different places, is that a lot of people don't really want to take the time to even read a one-page flyer, let alone come down here to the city hall to pick one up and read it. And that's a second issue that I think needs to be addressed, because we need as many voters as possible to understand the issue, as opposed to just saying, oh, tax, not interested. What, there was information about that? Oh, I don't pay attention to that stuff. And unfortunately, and I do that too, I get something in the mail, I'll just toss that, I don't have time tonight to read that. And I'm not a good citizen when I say that, but it is a factor. So, thank you, now proceed.
I'd like to touch on short-term rentals. So, I come from an area, I come from an area that was inundated with short-term rentals, Morro Bay, California. I had a house there, I lived in that house, and I was a permanent resident. There were so many, in North Morro Bay, so many short-term rentals that the city finally had to put a moratorium on short-term rentals, because it really was affecting the permanent residents. It was horrible. We had over three hundred short-term rentals in the North Morro Bay, which is a small area. I'm not a fan of short-term rentals, I always say that. So, I, I would like to, I'm hoping that Dune City stays incorporated, and we're able to address short-term rentals before it gets out of hand.
I'd like to bring that up, because ten years ago, when we had short-term rental over there on, on Lake Drive, they had a biker group over there, more than two dozen of them, smoking on the balcony, they started a fire right below the house, they were ready. If I hadn't seen it, we'd have a conflagration out there. I'll agree with you, you get short-term rentals, you're going to have problems.
We need to continue to have the input that you all bring here to help us do our job.
If I can, excuse me, if you make those flyers, I will take them to every human being in Dune City. I'll go to their door, knock on the door, say, here I am, and I will give them the paper. Maybe I can get some of those people.
He could turn it on one way.
Sir, I'll offer my time.
I'll, I'll help you with the mailbox.
Okay. No, I'll go to their door.
Oh.
Sir, ma'am, let's find out, well, you got any questions?
We as the community, it's not just short-term rentals. I was out at Henneman the other day, a guy who lives across the lake brought his boat and cleaned it out from the ocean. And he lives on the lake, he's got to drink water on the lake. We are all doing this. And if we're not going to do it together, and we're going to blame everybody else, nothing's going to get done. And Lane County is not going to fix that.
Lane County will fix that. I watch it every single day, as they do that, I have taken pictures, I have sent them to Lane County, I have sent license plate numbers, I have sent all that information. Lane County says they will not prosecute any of these people.
How about stating, have you tried stating?
Yes, they will not do anything.
So, I, in terms of short-term rentals, one of the agenda items that I sent the mayor on Sunday was defying short-term rentals as residential property rentals of less than thirty days, than short-term rentals on residential zone property. That was one of the agenda items I asked you to put on the next meeting, I don't think you did it, or I don't know if it is or not.
I got a question, since you brought up short-term rentals. In fact, I've printed out a couple of pieces I can give to you guys to look at, just for us getting involved. We have five right in our area there, and a guy just bought, who has an LCC, and he bought three pieces of property in a row. Now, when you buy them with an LCC or LCB, it is no longer just for resident. That, he's a business operator to begin with, right there. And I just want to ask council members, are you going to give this guy permission to put more rentals on my property, on our road? I got the map printed out right here, I'd like to give it to you guys to look at. I will show you. This is, this is one, this is one, my house is here, my hotel is here. This, this piece is just a little bit shorter, smaller. This, this, this is the rental corporation. He, he just bought all of these, and he's going to make these three pieces into Airbnb's. And there's two more here, the house right there, built in the eighties, and this house right here. So this is just like, it's just going to continue, every time someone passes away, this guy, he doesn't even, they don't even go on, they don't even go into the court, I mean, to, they don't even go to, they ask them to come up. He's got an inside thing, and he just buys them. This is going to continue, because we don't, I think they shouldn't be there.
We as the council don't.
This is a residential area, I don't, I don't want a moratorium on them, I want them gone. They're nothing but poison. I moved down to my neighborhood because it was a dead-end street, I raised my family, and my neighbors raised their families. There's no families no more, because you're just having people come and people go, house cleaners coming, lawn people taking care of it, because people don't live there, and we're on our roads, that you guys are all whining about. And it just continues.
I think you're, I remember you gave this information to us, and that's one of the reasons why I asked this to be put on.
Thank you.
Yes.
One of the things that was brought up here that would be nice to be able to resolve in some way is that the disconnect between Dune City, that's called Florence, Westlake, that's called Dune, I mean, Dune City, it's just, there isn't a continuity that we would get if we were a single city that was, you know, we were all together. Our, all the mail came here, all the addresses were Dune City, or whatever the city is. It's just, it's just fragments that are all there.
Right, and that would be taken after Congress to change. Which unwilling to get shot. No, I know it does.
Well, I'm glad I have a question. So why can't these short-term rental owners pay the taxes or enforcement to oversee the rentals?
Yeah, let's vote on that.
And they're not going to be written.
We actually had a vote on this, and we had a lot of discussion about setting license fees.
Yeah, next thing you know, you'll say, hey, that's working good, let's have more of them come in, then we won't have to worry about paying taxes. We'll just have the short-term rental good. Then the next thing you know, all you'll have is short-term rentals. You won't have a city no more. And the people that have these rentals don't live here, so they can't vote. So let's vote them out.
We're going to be, continuing to discuss that. We have not finalized how we're going to live with short-term.
We don't want to live with them, sir. It's residential, I do not understand why that is taking place.
We're just going to short-term rental deal. So thank you for your input.
I think, if I may say, I think we had to read in the last regular meetings we had, that we would put the short-term rentals high on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes.
All right. I think I'm going to ask for a motion to let us go home. Don't move. Miss the good in the order, and Sheldon wants to go on.
We didn't actually adjourn.
We didn't, we didn't. I've excused them to go home.
Wait a minute, if she, if she's. Should I be recording? No, they're, they're not.
We can do that, if you have like. We can do that.
I'm racing, he's filming, I think eighty years old.
Wait a minute, she doesn't have a phone yet.
And as of tonight, I'm retiring and resigning as mayor. I think that you deserve better. And I'm not sure I did that penny for that, but on top of things, for numerous reasons. So officially, I'm resigning as the mayor right now.
I would like to say, Sheldon, that you have put many years of internal service into this community and this council, and we thank you.
Thank you, Sheldon, for your hard work, it's a difficult.
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. Have you been mayor how many times?
Well, the last two mayors have died.
Have you been mayor three, four times?
Five.
Five times? Wow.
Question, do you? So, how do we process, what the question is, what does that take?
It would take a motion? Or are you guys coming forward with, you know, if you know some people who, first of all, you would ask, is there anybody on the council willing to step forward?
We can do that right here.
You can do that right here, right now?
I, I would personally.
Well, let me make sure that this is on.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Just because I know the individual is interested in doing the right things for the city of Dune City, I would nominate Rory Hammond to take this position.
Rory, you're given an opportunity to say, oh, no!
Well, I, I would be willing to do that. I, I actually run a little better than I do participate in it. I'm more likely to eat my mouth shut, because I know that the mayor doesn't have a chance to vote. And I do have an agenda. Because I have twenty-five things on my list that I think are important, some are immediate, some are intermediate. I think that we need to set rules, and give staff direction, and give the city direction. I think I could do that, I can only promise to do that for the term. And if somebody doesn't like what I do, I can run. I, I like it a little bit.
Well, Rory has some good ideas and everything. Well, Rory has some good ideas and everything. I'm not sure I'd be willing to put in for him as mayor because I have been council president, and I feel that I also can deal with each other.
So, if I'm gonna lobby, if I'm gonna lobby, I have only missed one meeting in the last five years, even when I was a member. And I've actually been involved, I know that you've been involved too, and I do have the skills to run a meeting.
And so why?
I question that, but that's okay.
And I question some of your stuff too. So, I'm just saying.
I got it, I understand.
I think that there should be diversity on the council. I don't think it's something that has to be decided tonight, because if he steps down, we are taking care of. But I don't think it's, I'm not prepared to go into everything tonight since this was a shock. But I just think there should be some diversity in what we do, and.
So, do you have some, do you have a vision what the city should be? I mean, I nominated you to be president, if you remember, to do that, because, and I agree with you about diversity. And do you have the time? I think that this job that Sheldon has probably takes four hours a week. I'm willing to come here four hours a week and be in the office to do whatever I need to do, at least for the short term. There's 12 council meetings, there's four planning committee meetings, all the budget committees, meetings I think the mayor should attend, there's two Lake County board commissioner meeting that somebody should, they should at least go twice, once or twice a year. We need to make contact with local commissioners, Lake County sheriffs. We should have a report from the Sayusla district report, the Sayusla school district, the Sayusla library district. We should have utility reports, rarely, so people know what the status is of the city and to build some rapport there. We need to fix the financial county reporting, we need to, we need to have road repair and scheduling. We do not know who, I have not seen a valid list for the county road, for the city roads. For instance, I went to Cotechech every day, every meeting for a year, to find out later that it's not a city street. We need, the mayor needs to set the agenda items with staff and pass that along. He needs to do that, and the mayor hasn't done that. We haven't done that for a while.
Well, let's try to keep this on a positive.
So, my point is, those are things that I know that I could do. I also know that I get short with people. I know especially when I have a cause that I cut people off, and I've done that, and I know that I alienated that through the snow. I also know that I have run Oregon Question Trails as the president of the council, I have run county chair meetings for Oregon Question Trails in Columbia County, and we have a lot done. And there's things that we can do. And some of it is, we need to poll the councils, we don't, the council members, the mayor has the ability to talk to each council member. I don't have the ability to go to each council member because I worry about changing meetings. The mayor can do that, you have to do that. And when there is a crisis, we had a crisis, we have a COVID crisis, where people didn't show up, and we had somebody who died of complications and things like that, I don't know who I was. And when people were housed in their places, we didn't do water reports because of fear. It takes courage to be a mayor. It takes courage to do the leadership, and boy, that's all I'm suggesting. And I'm willing to do that in a good way. I won't run again, but I think I could, I can give you an example of what it's like.
I think many of the things that you stated also apply to Susan, including the courage to do what's needed.
Thank you. Just because I'm quiet and I listen to people doesn't mean I don't have the courage to do things. I have run several major operations, but this is not the time, I think, to, if you want a resume put together, I'll be happy to do that.
We have a water problem that hasn't been fixed, I know, but some people don't think it's a water problem. We have an Airbnb problem, well, not Airbnb, we have a short-term rental problem, I would stand corrected. And we didn't get in front of it. We're always leading from behind, and we can't do that. So, but I don't, that's fine, I don't have to do any of this, but I'm telling you I can do a good job.
I have a question, just because being new to the council, I don't know you, I don't know you on any other level of the level we've had here. Seeing as when you're coming and you're putting forth in regards to being potentially put on the ballot to run for a council, we were put through lots of questions, can't that be instated? That way, we can come prepared to a question mayor meeting, or certain amount of people sit here and tell me what your stance on this is, tell me what your stance, because right now I just hear a bunch of back and forth, and that's not productive.
I apologize, and you're right.
I mean, it needs to come down to where there is a committee together formed, as a member wants to run for mayor, needs to come before that committee of some sort, whatever you want to call us, with those questions.
The committee at this point until the election is the council.
No, I know, but then it would come down to you three gentlemen and myself, with these two individuals coming before us, or with a set of questions going, what do you think on this? How are you gonna lead this on this? How are you gonna help fix this? And those are the questions that we need to come together as the remaining council members. If they're both running, they should not be in put into those questions, no offense to either one of you, but I don't, I don't, I don't know your stance versus your stance, because all I'm hearing is, well, I can do it, 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 I can do it. You both probably can do it, but who's gonna be the best to lead this group?
I agree, and thank you, because I don't think tonight is the place.
It's not the most appropriate to throw resumes at each other.
We do have an issue with checks and leadership for the council. We have another council meeting next Wednesday, and how we're gonna address that.
So, Susan is president, is that correct?
She says an interim until a new mayor can be correct, Jamie?
Yes.
So, it is rightfully go to her as the council president until a new mayor can be elected, and that's where you go in like, when I came in as going for a counselor position.
Same.
Should be the same process. We have to stay by a way of process, because other than that, we're just a free-for-all and we're just running amok.
I agree. I agree with you.
What has been being said by Mr. Hammond for the last five months is that this council needs to run by Robert Terrell's order, and it has not been doing that.
No, and I don't disagree with that, but there are non-confrontational people, and there are people that are not necessarily confrontational, but they're not going to back down, they want their voice to be heard, and they do it the appropriate way. That does not mean that A versus B is better than the other person. It needs to come down to the group of asking those questions, and then us joining together. What is the best leadership from this person? And this is what we need. Who do we feel that could fit that to lead?
Well, there's been a nomination posted on the table, so if it either gets seconded or dropped, no matter what.
I'm grateful for the nomination, but I don't think I'm ready to even vote on anything. I want to meet the four of us to figure out what we need to do, and what we need to have question, and where we want our leadership to be.
I agree, I'm not ready to vote tonight.
I'm not. I'm sorry, I, this is Susan, this is Rory, that's all I know. I know the actions of people from, you know, their actions from other meetings.
And now, now the issue is, is how do we get together as a council without having it posted as a meeting so that we can discuss these issues?
That's what we'll come back to.
We can have three.
We can have three.
Three committee meetings. Three committees.
I didn't.
Can we have more than one meeting?
What do you mean?
Like, since we can't have more than four.
If an ad hoc committee is appointed, you can meet as many times as you want to before. When you meet every day, if you want to.
That's my fun.
I'm for whatever needs to be done. If I'm elected to be into that committee to make the, you know, make a choice, I'm up for it, if I'm not, I'm not, I don't care, but I just want to make sure we're putting the most appropriate candidate in this position.
And we do have somebody who will run the meetings.
We do.
In the absence of Sheldon, and.
So, I would make you three, since there's two of us, and I also would recommend that you ask Sheldon what his preferences are.
Also.
Ask Sheldon what his preferences are.
Of course.
What his preferences are is a succession thing, so I think that's appropriate too. Because I beat up on him a lot, so he can, I think he should know.
I'm still waiting for the applause.
I wanted to applaud. Thank you so much.
Now, we have a motion on the table for three individuals to be on the committee. Can the people, selection? Do we have a second? Can it be a people?
Who are the three?
Two non-candidates.
He was just asking. Well, I know, but Tom's there too. Tom, Bob, and.
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, there's four.
Bob?
Four of the three.
I couldn't see you from here, I'm sorry. Have you said anything today?
Yes, he has.
Yeah, I forgot.
I guess there needs to be clarification.
On who's gonna be in that group?
Well, I will volunteer not to be. Given my schedule and what I've got going on, I would, I mean, I will do it if necessary, but I would prefer not to.
I move that Rich, Melissa, and Tom be the selection committee. Second for that?
Second.
Susan, you're running the meeting right now?
Oh, I am. Yeah.
He's just looking at his finger.
All in favor or discussion?
I, I'm, sorry, I thought that Sheldon was still here, he was still doing it for him, so.
I'm just gonna do that right there.
Okay, so, we have a motion, we need to vote. All in favor of those of Rich, Tom, and Melissa being on the selection committee?
Aye.
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 Tom?
I'm one of the candidates.
No, no, no. You can still vote. I need you three to it because you're on the committee, are you willing to do that?
He wants to be mayor.
He has to do it, my voice goes on the record so we can hear it, so. All right. Thank you.
So, do we have a motion adjourned, or do we want to vote?
Do you have anything else that you need to discuss?
Do you want to try and schedule something now, or Melissa, somebody want to take the scheduling now? Melissa, Rich, and Tom need to look at their schedules and figure out what time is best for them. And just fill me in and let me know what happens. Then they can get the candidates and see if the candidates are available at the time they are available, so.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask, Melissa, would you take a role in charge of setting up that meeting?
Sure. Yeah, sure. Maybe you can also make sure I'm not appropriating anyone that is not speech-fulfilled as to everyone. The only thing I ask is that I get a return that, hey, I got it. Because we live in an awful world of hacking right now.
All right. Does anyone else have anything for the good of the order tonight? Bob?
Aye.
Rich? Tom? Rory?
I wish we had, please make note the things that I asked to be put on the agenda for the next meeting. Please consider them, that's all I have.
Melissa, do you have a meeting?
I think there's all the power, but I'm still waiting. Having you pretty sure is a big indication of what we're doing.
That's much to be appreciated.
I'll buy you some room.
Thank you, Sheldon.
And I think I've cured everything so good, I really want to, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I've enjoyed interacting with each and every one of you. I'm just out of gas.
Yeah, understood.
So, with that, is there a move to adjourn?
Second? Ooh. Rich? No, I mean, you, who first?
Melissa.
Melissa. Okay, Rich, you did so.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned. For the record?
Aye.
Ken, notice the?
Now, it's 48.
49.
48.
Did you want Rich?
Thank you.
Okay.